I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the first item on the agenda is mine, and it is a board appointment. Under Maryland state law, the sitting superintendent must notify the board by February 1st whether or not he or she would like us to consider renewing the contract for the upcoming four years. So also by law, by March 1st, we have to make that decision. So Dr. Smith did notify us on the 1st of February that he would like to seek an additional four-year term, which would then run through July 1st of, from July 1st of 2023, the whole way through June 30th of 2027. So this is, this is the item that, that the board will vote on that. Just for those of you who know me, you know, I'm not all touchy-feely. Clearly, everyone up here knows that as well, shocking, I know. But it has been, you know, Dr. Smith has been the only superintendent that I have known since I've been on this board. His dedication to the system and to the students, always to make sure that the, the people, and I know we have all those things and, you know, we talk about it a lot, but to actually see it in action that, you know, to take care of the people and the students is always at the forefront of every single decision. And because of that, not that it wasn't there before, but it is also seen as it trickles down through the cabinet and through our schools and through all of our, you know, administration and, you know, all of the supports that we have for our students and our staff. So I would just like to thank you for considering another four years on this crazy ride that, you know, I mean, I don't, hopefully it's a little calmer than the last four, but you never know.
You never say that.
So with that, I will open up to anyone else on the board who would like to speak, or if not, then I'm just going to ask for the motion.
I move that the board approve the contract between the Board of Education of St. Mary's County and Dr. J. Scott Smith Superintendent for the term July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2027, with the contract to be posted to the SMCPS website under the Superintendent's tab by Saturday, July 1st, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
This is not planned to have all of these people here, just the way it fell.
You all got it for this. It's, the board chair's birthday, and it's, the gift I give is four more years of me. Gift curse, either way. I do, I do truly appreciate, this is my ninth year serving in this role. The first year was, was acting interim. It's, it's been, it has been the great pleasure of my life to serve St. Mary's County Public Schools. There is no other place I would rather work, raise kids, and, and be with, be with a fantastic group of professionals. And Ms. Bailey is, is right. All decisions we make, the first thing we ask is, is it good for kids? And the second question we ask is, is it good for the people who are working with their kids? And if it's, if it's those two things, we move it forward. So, thank you.
I've watched as you have gone from teacher to administrator to central office. It's been a great journey, and congratulations.
And we, and we will have to say a thank you to your wife, Michelle, and your, and your family for sharing you with the school system, because I do not think that you have had an uninterrupted vacation or even day off vacation in, at least, at least since I've been here. Since I'm like, I send the text messages out, I'm like, hey, Scott's on vacation today, and then inevitably something happened. So, so thank you to them too for...
Without a doubt. And if I harken back to nine years ago, when you went through the, the appointment, you had flowers for my wife, which, which she will, she will never forget that.
But she's not here, so she's like...
Well, now it's like, yeah, well, whatever.
Yeah, she's like, okay.
It's like, yeah, whatever, it is what it is. So with that, let's, let's get on with some fantastic recognitions.
Okay, so our first recognition is Dr. Marr. I see him somewhere. There you are. With our National Board Certification.
You didn't do your superintendent update?
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. I, well, don't, well, we'll make it, we'll make it really quick. Yeah, you, you've got me all flustered. People who know me know that I don't like compliments. I thrive on criticism. That's why I'm purpose-built for the role. And I thank my mother for, you know, that, that's, so, so superintendent's update.
Yeah, go ahead.
You like that? Okay, great.
Yes, that's fine.
Sorry.
Well done. Otherwise, we would have been like, what's going on? So we have started the second round of new teacher visits where we are actually doing regionalized and grouped throughout. We're sitting down with all of the people who are new to St. Mary's County Public Schools, who we've hired to be classroom teachers. And they fall into three categories. There are those who come to us with experience from other systems, that they've relocated down to the area, or they've been lured down here, or whatever that might be. We have people fresh out of, fresh out of college that have their brand-new teaching credentials in their hand, and this is their very first job. And then we have some who are mid-career life changers. They have a degree, but they've never taught before. They're coming in, and we are actually working through the certification process with them as they are teaching in the classroom. It's an, it's an amazing group of people, and these conversations are, are great. And we give them questions ahead of time. So the beginning part of the year, the first ones was, was more about getting to know them. The second part of the year are really sharing a success. So we start with something that's going well in their classroom, followed by how they are being supported, successful, and committed to staying with us. Because that's, we want them to feel supported and successful, but most importantly, we want them to stay. So it's the three S's: support, success, stay. And then the last is talking about how they found their way to us, and then how we can help other people find their way to us. Because recruitment in a tight labor market is more important than anything else. So the successes that people shared, some of them were quite, were really quite moving. And you'd be amazed, what makes a teacher a teacher is the small things that happen are really what drive their work, those, those small moments with kids. We talked to a teacher who works with the littlest learners, and she was talking about the fact that she had 21 kids in her classroom, and 14 of them were boys, which, if you've taught elementary at a lower level, that's a lot of boys. And eight of them had some pretty pronounced behavioral problems at the beginning of the year. And it really, it's taken months to work through to really form that relationship, to work with parents at home to talk about that, and, and the success that she had throughout. And it was really great. And she said, "Every day, I find a new piece of the puzzle to, for, to help each student." And that really is it. And if you imagine somebody with a, you know, a thousand-piece puzzle of a blizzard, that basically is working with kids. You're figuring out exactly which each, each piece fits. And then the second, we've heard from several, now, they might just be saying it for our edification, but I don't believe so. They're really earnest when they say it. Several have said that last year, they were, they were close to leaving the profession of teaching. And they came here for whatever reason that might be, and because they're here, they're, they're, they're sticking with it. They, it's a, it's a different, it's a different experience in St. Mary's County. And they're talking about the relationship that they have with each other. They're talking about the relationship that they have with their teachers down in the hall, their mentors, all the people that they interact with, their principals, their administrators, their content supervisors. All of that really is what is, is keeping them engaged and, and involved. And that's, that's incredible. That's a testament to what makes St. Mary's County such a special place. So, sharing a success story, the first, so Bailey Roscoe, she's a Hollywood Elementary School third-grade teacher, and she's coming to us with experience from another county. We lured her away, and she shared her success story that she was doing fractions with third graders, and she brought in crumble cookies, and she only had six, six cookies and 18 kids, and they had to figure out how to divide the fractions. And at the end, the exit slip was the kids eating the crumble cookies. And so it was very sweet and nice. And so, and Bailey, that's her dog, her dog, Desi, Desi, I think, Desi, 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 her pup. Great. I mean, they're great. Future superintendent there. So, we do have a job fair coming up on March 25th. So if you know anybody who is interested in working for St. Mary's County Public Schools, and it doesn't necessarily have to be in the classroom, can be in a whole host of ways. This is focused on teachers. But, you know, if you want to become a, if you're an HVAC mechanic, and you're saying to yourself, boy, I really would like to work in schools, let me tell you, we have a place for you. So that's coming up on March 25th. I'm going to plug it all the way through and up to the day of. That's also Maryland Day. So what says Maryland Day more than teaching in a Maryland school and St. Mary's in specifically? We are going to be rolling out on the website. We've been working for almost a year and a half on a brand-new website, a brand-new platform. We've been migrating all of our stuff. It's multimodal. It, it goes on your phones and your iPads and all this other stuff, gets you very close to the, the information that you need. That'll be more, that'll be launching on March 3rd. So before we get together again, we wanted to make sure that you knew that the website will be looking different. And that's the school system website and every single school website as well, because they're all integrated and they all, we're sharing the platform across all of them. Blueprint update, where we have sent our responses, our draft responses for input. It's going to come back. Whatever they tell us that we need to do differently, we will do differently. And then it comes before you for presentation on March 8th for your input and thoughts and consideration. And then we will bundle it all together, and we will send it off by March 15th. But I have to say, for the hundreds of people who've been involved in this work, our homework was done on time. We weren't like waiting till the last second. We're not racing. We've got it, we submitted early enough to actually have some review and it come back to us. So Dr. Marr is in the back, and thank you to Dr. Marr and all with whom you're working to get that, to get that bundled up and ready to go. It is Black History Month. There have been great things going on across our entire system. Chopticon High School did a gallery walk. Lexington Park did several presentations. The Board of Education and the panels that are in the back there, the, the Equity School Site Leaders, the ESLS, they got together two weeks, last week, two weeks ago in February, and they had these placards in the back that gave local history of prominent African-Americans in St. Mary's County and everything from some of the most troubling history in St. Mary's County to some of the most celebratory and interesting, to include stuffed ham. So how the evolution of stuffed ham and how it found its way to the World's Fair in 1967. So it's worth taking a look at the placard back there. It's really, it's, it's really great. They did a great job with all of that. And again, our fantastic logo that was designed by Ms. Denny at Leonardtown High School through the Graphics Communications Program over at the Forest Center. Here we are, we are almost to the end of February. We have used no snow days, and it looks like it's going to be 80 degrees tomorrow, so we might not use any. Everybody's like, we all want snow days. I understand that. But if we don't use them, we get to subtract them at the end of the year. So when we get together in March, we're also going to talk about the joys of, of not having used snow days and how we get out earlier and can enjoy summer.
Power through now to get earlier in June is what the message is, right?
Right, absolutely. Do your, do your work now, submit it early, and yeah, there's great reward. And, oh, look, it's a repeat. Why is it a repeat? Because we need people to go to the job fair on March 25th. Please consider coming and joining the incredible work going on in St. Mary's County Public Schools. And with that, our student member of the board.
I have to start with, can we use the snow days? Because I don't get anything.
No, seniors get nothing.
I'm not using the snow days. I'm gone on June 2nd, so everything's...
You're really gone in May, something, right?
I'm really gone, like, yeah, or something like that. I don't know. I just have to say, this is unjust.
The best was via that we had like 13 snow days or whatever, and that was...
And I wasn't a senior. Tragic. Okay, well, anyway, I'd actually like to start with recognizing that it is Black History Month, and as Dr. Smith touched on, a bunch of our schools are doing really, really great things to recognize that and to promote education and maybe some activism too. And I have to speak about my own experience, right? So at Leonardtown High School, I am a member of the Black Student Union. As I have mentioned, it is, the president of that organization at our school is Jordan Walters, a fellow senior of mine, a fellow, close friend of mine. And this past meeting was on February 13th, and it was really cool. We learned a lot about Black History Month and the history of Black History Month, and that every president for a very long time now has reinstated Black History Month as a nationally recognized thing, which is super cool. And next week, no, not next week, I don't know when, but we are going to be watching Hidden Figures as, you know, kind of our historical perspective. So that is really cool, and we'll be inviting, you know, other members of our school community to watch that with us. And this Friday, there will be a read-in at LHS, so that is pretty cool. Other than that, I'd like to talk about a few things. I'll keep it brief, because I know there's a lot of you here. I'm so sorry. First, I'd like to say thank you to Mrs. Steele, Principal of White Marsh Elementary, because after our board meeting two weeks ago, I went back to White Marsh for their data review that they do every year. So this is kind of a mid-year thing that they do to check in with their students and really get them involved on, you know, what they need to work on or what they're doing great at. And they're doing great at a lot of things. So I'd like to say thank you to the fourth-grade teachers there, Mr. LaCount and Ms. Asha, and the fifth-grade teachers who I was great to, or who was great to see again, Ms. Wathen and Ms. Cord. And they shared their students with me for just a little bit. And it's just, I like elementary school, and I don't like high school. Sorry, Mr. Copsy. Sorry, Ms. Sunderland. Hey, I promise I love your class so much, Ms. Sunderland. I will, I will get there.
Yeah, you better, right, you got a lot of catch, yeah.
Okay, but elementary school's just better, you know, like, anyway, that's the sense of point. So I'd just like to say thank you again. It's great to see our younger learners taking accountability for their learning and taking ownership of that. It's, it's really awesome. They're doing great at a lot of things. And we talked about this during last board meeting, but our DIBELS data is looking up. It's awesome. So that's, for anyone who doesn't know, that is the reading data, so how well our students are doing with reading accuracy and speed and all of that. So reading is thinking, thinking is learning, learning is awesome, as Dr. Smith likes to say. So, yeah, great to see that. But in other, you know, kind of switching the gears, last week, we had the second general assembly for the St. Mary's Association of Student Councils on Wednesday, February 15th. It was really awesome. We voted on our students' views on a couple bills of legislation that are going through the House and the Senate at the state level right now. And so on March 14th, myself and a few other members of the St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, SMAS, Executive Board, we'll be heading up to Annapolis for Student Advocacy Week. So we'll be expressing those opinions as were voted on. So that's pretty cool. And other than that, Rising Freshman Nights are the week of March 6th. So if you're in eighth grade, or if you're the parent of an eighth grader or the guardian of an eighth grader, please do attend, because it is worth it. You learn a lot. There are club fairs. So if, if you're a student, or if you're the student, and you're freaking out, you're like, oh, I don't know what I'm going to do next year. Like, I don't know how I'm going to fill my time at one lunch, that really scary, awesome thing when you can also do homework, but you can also do other things. The other things are clubs, are wonderful, wonderful organizations that run our meetings during lunch. So there's a lot of great things that will be happening. I think I'm going to be onstage at some point at Leonardtown High Schools. So that's pretty cool. If you want to, if you want to come see me embarrass myself just a little bit, come to that. But anyway, so that will be the week of March 6th, starting with Leonardtown on March 6th, I think. If I'm wrong, I'm so sorry. And then other than that, you mentioned that Maryland Day is March 25th, and I'd just like to mention that LHS has a Maryland Club that I'm part of. It's pretty cool. We talk about Maryland, we eat Maryland food, we love Maryland. So that is, yeah. I don't know if you guys knew that, but it is a thing. Yeah, there is. And other than that, our secondary visits are scheduled. I'm so sorry, Ms. Sunderland. Ms. Sunderland is here. She is my AP Bio teacher, and I love her very much. And I will be missing your class a whole lot for those visits. I'm so sorry. But yeah.
Four times, just four times.
Just like four times, six times.
That's not as bad as your physics, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, that is what we will be up to in the coming weeks. So, yep, that is my update. Sorry, that was ridiculously long, but anyway.
You're busy.
Thank you.
All right.
Now. Okay. Now, Dr. Marr.
Should have had him stand up there the whole time.
I just appreciate you building the suspense for this.
That's great, exactly. We aim to please.
Well, thank you, board members. And tonight, we recognize the exemplary teachers who have gone beyond expectations. The National Board of Professional Teachers, Teaching Standards was established as a profession's vehicle for defining and recognizing the high standards of teaching. It is a voluntary process. It is a performance-based process that includes teacher portfolios, student work samples, videotapes, and an analysis of candidates' classroom teaching and student learning. The certification is a demonstration of teaching practice as measured against these high and rigorous standards. As I said, it is an advanced system of National Board Certification that complements but does not replace the state licensing process. But it is recognized as a gold standard in teaching certification and is recognized in the blueprint and incentivized through the blueprint as well. Only 3% of teachers nationwide have earned this certification. And as I mentioned, the blueprint provides those incentives, an additional $10,000 a year in salary increase for those teaching within a classroom. To earn this prestigious certification, we are thrilled to celebrate those in our system who have done so. We have 35 currently, and we are excited to add to those ranks this evening. So this year, in addition to the newly certified four, National Board Certified teachers this evening, we have another 57 who are currently going through the process. They're working on the components as part of the process for National Board. And throughout this process, we have 14 of those currently certified who are serving as mentors and supports, coaching them, and giving them feedback throughout the process. I want to offer special thanks to Ms. Colleen Gill, Ms. Denise Eichel, and Ms. Sarah Lorick, who are providing support and leadership for this cadre along the way. And I'd like to invite Ms. Gill up to talk about some of those supports before we recognize those who are, who have earned. Ms. Gill.
Good evening. I am thrilled to be able to come and celebrate these dedicated educators today. I first came to National Board Certification back in 2003, so I am on my second renewal track right now. And I couldn't imagine back then that we would now have three departments within St. Mary's County Public Schools coming together in order to support our candidates, and that we would need that many. So I'm thrilled that three of our teachers who are being recognized tonight are members of our mentoring team. And as Dr. Marr said, our mentors support teachers in a variety of ways. They support them either with candidate, direct candidate support in their certification area, because teachers certify in an area either elementary or middle childhood or adolescence. And they certify in a content area, but then they can also, there are four components that make up National Board Certification. One is a test center, and the other three are portfolio components. So we have mentors who specifically work with components two, three, and four. And our component two and our component three mentors are actually with us today. So they have a Herculean task of reading portfolios, watching videos, and supporting our teachers with, does this sound right? Am I addressing the question? And really just a lot of cheerleading in the back. National Board was originally designed to be in isolation. It's something a teacher can go through on their own. However, through the decades, it started in 1987. So through the preceding decades, they discovered, just like teachers discover, everything's better when you have support. Everything is better when you have someone to lean on, is someone to just sometimes sigh a lot to. And as the family members here, we'd like to thank you for often being that person who just allowed the candidate to walk around the house with deep sighs. And with that, I'm thrilled just to be your girl Friday to hand out...
Dr. Miss, would you join us as well, so we can recognize these outstanding educators? So first, we would like to recognize the following teachers for the accomplishment of having achieved National Board Certification. We have Catherine D. Dominico from Park Hall Elementary, and I don't believe Catherine is here this evening. So we welcome Mr. Mike Malone from Park Hall Elementary. Teresa Smith from Leonardtown High School. Inductionist, I'm sorry, those aren't in alphabetical order, but I'm going to go in alphabetical order. The following teachers have maintained, that means that they've had to reapply and resubmit and re-earn, so Ms. Emily Sunderland Baldwin from Leonardtown High School. Lindsay Dynis from Dinerd Elementary. Taryn Long from the Chesapeake Public Charter School. Ruth Morris from Dinerd Elementary School. Dr. Bonnie Skinner from the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. And April Wathen from Lady Marshall Elementary. So congratulations to all of them. Let's give them a round of applause.
So we need to have somebody take a picture.
Yes.
Right, so whoever we can have to get, does anybody want to say anything? It's unusual to have a group this quiet. It really is amazing. We love the, the attention that the National Board has, has received, certainly through the blueprint. But you would be doing this work regardless, and most of you started this work regardless. And for those being recertified, you did it long before it was considered to be something of the scale of $10,000 more per year. But it really is, it is absolutely one of the most fantastic ways in which we professionalize and advance our, our careers and our skills. And just, it's wonderful to see all of you here, and let's get a picture. So, well, we have Mike, there we have. Get over there. Just them? Really? You don't?
You got to organize them. It's too long the line. Get them all.
Okay, everybody.
Next, we have School Counseling Week, which actually was two weeks ago, but we held it until the evening.
We did, we did, we did reference it.
We referenced it, right, so Ms. Long?
Yes.
We did not forget about them. Just want to make sure everyone could be here.
Hi, good evening. I am here this evening with Ms. Rhonda Hunt, Supervisor of School Counseling, to share and express our appreciation for our school counselors. St. Mary's County Public Schools joined with the American School Counselor Association in recognizing our school counselors earlier this month, the first week of February, February 6th through the 10th. We have asked this evening several counselors to join us in recognition. Will you please come up and join us now? Ms. Mapree Gray, Ms. Mindy Stripe, Ms. Kristen Curtis, and Ms. Tarita Washington, as they help us recognize all 51 of our school counselors. School counselors are actively engaged in helping all students examine their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents. They design and deliver school counseling programs that improve student outcomes. They lead, advocate, and collaborate to promote equity and access for all students by connecting their school counseling program to the school's academic mission and the school improvement plan. We are here recognizing the variety of ways school counselors build connections between students, the community, and the community at large. For example, Ms. Gray and the team of school counselors at Chopticon High School invited parents to join small groups to discuss issues relevant to their students' grade level and to encourage connectedness among parents. Leonardtown High School counselors surveyed the freshman class to determine their level of school involvement and sense of connectedness. Students with little to no connections work with their school counselors to build viable connections in support systems within the school community. Great Mills High School is building student connections with local workforce representatives and educational institutions. Ms. Stripe, the team of, this team of school counselors, and the College and Career Liaison at Great Mills High School host panel discussions where leaders from the local workforce, Great Mills High School graduates, and representatives from CSM and St. Mary's College speak to current Great Mills High School students about post-graduation opportunities available to them. to them in our community. At the elementary level, Ms. Curtis, School Counselor at Oakville Elementary, facilitated student engagement in expressing of caring within their community. This year, 4th grade students at Oakville Elementary demonstrated caring by decorating and writing cards of encouragement to elderly residents of a local long-term care facility. Ms. Washington, School Counselor at White Marsh Elementary, builds connections between students when she works with 5th graders to be the career fair presenters to students in grades kindergarten through 4th grade. These 5th graders research their desired career and deliver a 10-minute presentation to include a PowerPoint presentation, supportive artifacts, information on needed education and training, and required tools of the trade. Thank you, Ms. Curtis, Ms. Stripe, Ms. Gray, and Ms. Washington, for representing all of our school counselors for the amazing work they do for our students and families every day. Thank you.
Whereas the week of February 6th through 10th, 2023, has been designated as National School Counseling Week in the school system across our great nation. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. And whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development. And whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children. And whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help explore, students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves. And whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County Public Schools recognizes February 6th through 10th, 2023, as School Counseling Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all staff and students were encouraged to recognize this event and participate in its observance, and signed by all members of the board. Thank you very much for every single thing you do. As we have gone through some of the most challenging years we will ever face in public education, everybody has to come together as a team to support our kids. And you have been quarterbacks many times on issues and done a beautiful job. Thank you very much for all that you do. Thank you. Want to take a quick picture? Do we have the resolution?
Scott, do you want to make your announcement that people can leave and we're not offended?
Right, so this is the time when we take no offense if you find yourself somewhat disinterested in, well, the Chesapeake Public Charter School, that's very fascinating. We're going to get an update, that's going to be awesome. High school transition and scheduling, staffing updates. But don't worry, it'll all be on YouTube, and you can watch it there. Thank you very much for your participation this evening.
Okay, we do not have a public hearing tonight. Public comment?
We have one. Marla Posy Moss.
Okay.
So, at the podium, you're all set up, we're good to go, we've got a camera.
I just have to read this statement, and then Kim will start the timer.
You can go over and get some.
In the meantime.
Yes, please.
Okay, so we welcome input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not comment. This is not the appropriate form for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Let's see, we also sit as the appellate body in both student and employee appeals. We cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. Speakers must sign in at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. If you have any written comments, if you give them to Kim, then we can put them in our board docs as part of the, okay? Tell you, go ahead.
I brought my cellphone up, because I'm not sure if I see a light or whatever that makes me know I'm finished. Okay, well, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. I'm Marla Posy Moss, the President of Free State PTA, the official State PTA Congress representing National PTA in the state of Maryland. Thank you again, Chair Bailey and Superintendent Smith, for having me, as well as the Board of Education members. I visit with you all today to associate a name with the face of the Free State PTA Congress and to enlighten you on a state PTA perspective. First, I would like to share with you what distinguishes us from other parent groups, especially since all PTAs are nonprofits, and are membership-based advocacy associations. As the largest child advocacy association in Maryland with over 50,000 members, the Free State PTA values collaboration, commitment, diversity, respect, and accountability. The state PTA works with a constituent myriad, constituent PTAs and a myriad of professional business expectations, ranging from leadership training, adherence to financial guidelines and government's documents such as bylaws, promotion of partnerships within the school community, maintaining insurance and tax filings, and administration of programs and grant funding that promote family engagement, the arts, health and safety, literacy, and host of other parent interests that contributes to a positive school climate. A critical component that underlies our work as a PTA family is diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI. The PTA realizes that strong education that considers DEI helps children, their families, and school communities be more successful. Moreover, equality education is attained when diverse voices, perspectives, and experiences are infused in acquiring knowledge and learning in the classroom, executing policies and procedures, and conducting professional development. Additionally, achievement is improved when the implementation of education is tailored with the proper resources to meet the needs of students. That, my friends, is equity. Membership to PTA is open to anyone who believes in the mission and values of PTA. The mission of PTA is to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. You don't even have to have the child in a school to be a member of a PTA. You can even have children in non-public schools and be a member of PTA. We support all students in PTA. I'd like to share with you just a few legislative bills that we are supporting in Annapolis. The House Bill 185, Non-Public Schools and Childcare Providers Corporal Punishment Prohibition. We're also supporting a plethora of other bills with regards to environment. The Youth Equity and Safety Act, which actually allows children to be charged as children and not adults, as well as Teacher Certification Program Implementation and Study, House Bill 56. We will send you an invitation to our convention in July. So thank you for giving us your time today.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, next up is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes for February 8th, 2023, personnel, teachers, excuse me. There are no administrative and supervisory appointments. We also have the athletic and physical education supplies and team uniforms. So I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We have no action items tonight, but we do have three information items, the first of which is the report form, the update from the Chesapeake Public Charter School. Good evening, I am the liaison for the charter school, so I am going to introduce tonight the three presenters for their annual report. First is Mr. Emerson, he's the Chesapeake Charter School Alliance President. We have Anne Shfunya and Sandrine Varley, who are both charter director and the education director of the charter school this year. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you guys for having us this evening. We're super excited to be here and tell you about what our school's been up to for the last year. So first, just a quick definition, is that charter schools are non-sectarian public schools of choice that has a charter that is a performance contract to outline the mission and goals and how the school will operate. So the Chesapeake Public Charter School is officially one of the St. Mary's County Public Schools, and therefore, you know, we come to you as the board to help govern and oversee that. But we focus on kind of project-based learning, arts integration, environmental literacy, and we focus on the whole child, and the charter agreement allows us to do that because we have kind of site-based management of the school. We fundraise, and we rely on that fundraising for many of those aspects of the school. And we'll hear soon that we're doing okay in that regard, so we're excited to give you that. We also have our own governing body called the Chesapeake Charter School Alliance Governing Board that includes parents, staff, and community members on that board. A little bit more about accountability and the school itself, so we sit, the Charter School Alliance owns the building where the charter school is, and is responsible for things like renovations and upkeep of that building. In the last year or so, we've added more office spaces and a conference room and worked on instrumental and general music rooms in the building. And we're continuing for our final year of expansion coming up and thinking about those renovations as well. There are bi-weekly meetings between St. Mary's County Public Schools and the leadership of CPCS, and the Charter School Alliance Governing Boards meets monthly to deal with other governance issues. In this last year, we've used kind of the chunk of ESAR funding we have to better support air quality in the building, a social-emotional learning coach, professional development, and recovery materials. Because we are, are site managed, we have also been doing, we keep track of things with audits, and our financial audit was last conducted for the period ending June 30th, 2022, and we've reported that information to the board here. And there were no significant deficiencies or weaknesses identified for that period. And just a little bit of update on where we stand for fundraising. In the 21-22 school year, we raised $72,000. And to date, in this school year, the report here was $38,000, but in the last week, we've started our Vintage Affair Weekend, it's this weekend, and we just held an online auction and raised nearly $9,000 from that. So this number will boost up here this month as kind of a primary fundraising month for us. And we do all sorts of different fundraisers that I'm sure you're aware of, passive fundraisers, direct appeals, and special events.
All right, Anne.
Thank you. So instruction, instruction in teachers, my favorite part. So we have our MCAP data, this is the first grade-level performance data through MCAP that we've had post the pandemic. So we were glad to see that we performed similarly to how we have performed in the past compared to other St. Mary's County Public Schools as well as the state of Maryland. You know, we're always looking at where are areas that students are succeeding, and we want to continue doing those programmatic things, what things do we need to improve upon, you know, our 8th grade math scores, we were like, hmm, okay. And for us, you know, a lot of our students take algebra, so it is a smaller number of students. You know, our favorite part after we get our MCAP scores is when we get the individual scores. Because we're small, we like to look at, you know, student by student, name by name, what are we doing? This is a piece of many data points that we look at, we're always collecting formative information on students, looking to see what recovery needs to be put in place, interventions, programming changes. And we do that in professional learning communities with our teachers on an ongoing basis. It also helps to inform professional development that we do with staff, not only around academics, but social-emotional, responding to trauma, executive functioning, lots of executive functioning, how to support students. So, yeah. All right, and then you get me back. So it's nice to have some friends up here with me today. It's pretty exciting from my perspective. I will talk to you a little bit now just about where we were last year as opposed to this year with respect to our demographics. As you can see, we are, we're still growing, so we are 520 this year, last year we were 500, but the trend that we're excited to see continuing is that increase in the diversity of our student population. So we're pretty excited to see the results that we had expected after putting the weighted lottery in place actually coming to fruition. Just great. Every year, we start our admissions process in December, where we have our parent information sessions. This year, we were glad to have everybody in person and tromping through the school and checking things out, they were well-attended. We've also been able to do things still in the digital world, so we can keep our website updated and videos online, so that folks who aren't able to make it are able to meet the people in our school. We always do a pretty significant outreach program through our local Title I schools and the schools on the Great Mills River Corridor, as well as a significant amount of private outreach into our community through a variety of other businesses and locations. So, we went through that whole process. This year, we had in our current families 29 kindergarten siblings and three staff students that were taking up 50, or of the 54 spaces, 32 of them. When we closed the application period, we had 402 families who were eligible for the lottery. When we raised this presentation, it was up to 431, it's now up to 447. So we continue to take applications even after the lottery is run, and those, as they come in, are put right onto the waitlist. So that's great, and I think that's the true measure of our successes at school, is when you see that you've got that number of families that are interested in coming. If we ever see that number starting to tank, then we know that we have work to do. Out of those 402 families, 16% claimed that they were economically disadvantaged, and that's what we spend the month of January doing, is going in and verifying all of that data. Our biggest applicant pool is always kindergarten, as you can see, 142 for this year, that's a pretty significant amount, as well as 6th grade, we see the jump there as well. And then we always notice that in the 7th and 8th grade, there aren't quite as many folks, but usually somewhere between 15 and 20, which was again typical for this year. And as you know, we have priorities for our lottery system that include our founders. If you're a staff member and you work at the school, then your child is eligible to come in. A sibling preference, as well as then being able to weight the lottery for economically disadvantaged families as applicable by law. And so, as you might have seen on the last slide, we had jumped from 18 to 23%. We're allowed to weight the lottery up into 33%. So once we reach that cap, then we can stop that process. We're getting closer. It's great. I know you always like to know where our applicant's coming from, and as you can see, it's pretty similar year after year, with the, with the same top six being from those six zip codes. I was surprised to see a nice jump from Pax River this year, though. That was, that was something that I hadn't seen in the past. So, there you go. This next slide is just, it's percentage-based, didn't, that didn't make it into my grid, but it does represent the number of applicants that we had in our lottery, the percentage by race of the number of applicants that we've had. But then when we go ahead and run the lottery, we like to be transparent and show that there's, you know, a significant percentage of families invited in that kind of mirror what we see in terms of the number of applicants in the pool. So, that is just what that represents. And then, just a little bit about next year coming up, it'll be our last year of growth. We will be K to 8, three classes per grade level, 540 students, we're done, we're not having a high school.
Built.
People will ask that all the time.
Right.
Not the case. So we will be fully built out, which is pretty exciting. Our facility is beautiful, we have plenty of space for all of those little bodies to be. And in terms of it being our last year of growth, we know we're going to need an additional school counselor to really help with the middle school population, just in terms of getting all of the scheduling ready to go to high school and all those pieces, it's a pretty significant amount of work for one counselor to be able to do. And then additionally, we'll be putting in our own safety and security assistant with some additional duties, as with some clerical secretarial kind of stuff. with some additional duties as with some clerical secretaries kind of stuff as well. I think that we're pretty excited about the way that our growth has gone this year with respect to the change in our organizational structure. It has been quite a pleasure to work with Sandy as the education director. She really knows instruction very well and is doing an amazing job with our staff. So it's nice for me to be able to kind of step back from that perspective and then kind of focus a little bit more on some of the board initiatives and mission-based initiatives and advocacy and budgets and all of those other pieces. So I'm pretty excited with the way this year has gone and I'm looking forward to the future. And with that, if you have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer.
I don't have any questions, but I just like to say thank you because I know CPCS is a very uniquely-run school, and it does wonders for a myriad of kids across our county. So, yeah, they come from different backgrounds and they benefit from that special, you know, more close-knit community. And I've seen it within, you know, my close friend groups. Many of my classmates came from CPCS. And, yeah, they're awesome. So, yeah. Thank you.
I noticed in this chart that exceptional, that you did very well compared to state and St. Mary's Schools. So that's, I'm complimenting you that you've done very well on that. That's, that stuck out very clear to me. The only other question I have is, so I can understand this in terms, if you're doing a lottery, it's as I understand it, it's not biased at all, right?
Correct.
You're, you're not cooking books or anything like that? Because I noticed the African-American population's a little higher than it is in, in the county, and I was just curious why that, that might be.
I think it has a lot to do with our outreach and the significant amount of outreach that we do in the community in which the school is situated.
That makes sense.
I really feel strongly that, you know, we put a lot of effort into that, and so we want to make sure that, you know, our student population is reflective of the community in which we serve. So.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I think it's great that you make it a point to bring the siblings, to try to keep them together. I think that's really important, and, you know, I'm glad to see that you do that. And you guys are doing a great job. Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. You mentioned that you, you're capping the students that economically disadvantaged at 23%?
Thirty-three percent.
Okay. So, and, so as, and as we've all seen across the state, the, you know, the, the levels have increased. How, how are you, would you reevaluate that number? And where, who does that reevaluation? Is that coming from the board? Is that, meaning your board, not, not this?
No, it's actually state law. We're allowed to wait the lottery until we reach 33% economically disadvantaged. We'll take as many as we can get.
Okay.
We don't, we're not capping it in that respect, that we're cutting it off. We just won't be able to allow ourselves to wait the lottery because of the state law.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, so this is the first time you guys, since you put in your new levels of admin, right? So I think you've added another layer of, of administration within the system. So I'm just curious as to what benefits you've seen, you know, from that, whether it's, you know, it's being well-received. How, basically, how's it going?
From my perspective, it's going great. I think that, and Sandy's going to speak to this as well, I think, but that it just has allowed us the opportunity as a K to eight school to really kind of be able to address all of the different and various levels and requirements across the board, kindergarten through eighth grade. I think as well as I started to say before, that it, it gives us the opportunity, since we're almost like a little mini school system, right? Because we're responsible for, you know, our facility and maintenance and all of those other pieces, to have somebody who can kind of keep a, a better eye on that and, and really focus on that. When you're in the midst of the day-to-day in a school, you don't really have that opportunity. You're, you're constantly putting out fires and dealing with situations or discipline or a staff member who needs you, or you have to get into a classroom, you're doing observations, right? That's the focus of somebody who's the forward face of the school and education. There's not really somebody who's sitting there able to focus in on, wow, did we pay the mortgage? You know, like those kinds of things are really important as well, as well as advocacy and paying attention to what's happening at the, at the state level. With Blueprint, how does that affect charter schools? You know, just, it has really given us the opportunity to have somebody who can focus in on that specifically.
I mean, as well as professional development, things that are charter-based and, and, and areas that we want to grow, especially when we have staff turnover, you know, I'm able to look at Ange and say, okay, this is an area I feel like we really need a lot of focus. Can you focus on that while I'm focused on the day-to-day? Can you do some of that behind the scenes so that we can continue that professional development for students? So it's really been a nice hand-in-hand.
And I think too, with this being our last year of growth, or next year being our last year of growth, that, that's, that's the end of a revenue stream essentially. And so it's really important for me to then be able to focus with the board on, okay, what does that look like moving forward? And what if, you know, how do we project the next three years are going to go when essentially there's not an increase in a per pupil allocation for our budget? So.
Or at times that we say, Ange, we want to do this. Can you find money? Like, can you write a grant?
And, and the two academic deans that have come in at 12 months, Jill Rayford, I'm going to say it wrong, I say it every time. Jill Rayford and Jen Server have been amazing. Like, they've come in and have just been really remarkable in terms of picking up and helping and, you know, just becoming integral to the fabric of the school. So we're, we're pretty excited with the way that that's all been working out.
And then, I guess, you, you both mentioned it, so then what, I guess, what are the supports that you have in place? Because we've seen a lot of turnover that have, that, you know, in teachers that have come through that school, especially in the last, what, six, six or year or two? So, you know, and keep in mind, you know, when, when the list comes out, you know, we understanding that it's across all, the whole system, but it just seems like, you know, you do have a lot of turnover that's come apart over the past even six months since the beginning of the school year. So I'm just curious to know what, you know, what, what steps are you taking in order to ensure that, in addition to the supports that are provided by, you know, the school system, what else are you doing individually within your school in order to kind of stem that?
Quite a few things. It started really honestly at the begin of la, at the end of last year when we surveyed a lot of our new teachers last year to say, what supports didn't you get? What things do you need? Then we asked staff overall, what are some areas that, that we need to improve upon? And we've implemented a lot of those things. We've had, in some of our turnover, we've had people leave and leave mid-year. And they're going to go work someplace else out of education. I mean, we really have been looking at the numbers of staff that have left and the reasons why. And we want to make sure that we support the people that we have there who want to be in education and want to be with students. I mean, you know, we have resource teachers, we have grade-level meetings, we meet with them on an ongoing basis. We're constantly and continuously trying to find feedback from them and supports, as well as opportunities for, for professional development and education. A lot of people have needed support with classroom management. A lot of teachers that we have brought on were student teaching during the pandemic. And, you know, they, you know, getting kids to be quiet in a classroom was muting a button, you know? And it's much more than that when it's face-to-face. So it's just been, you're right, it's been a challenge. And, and one that, we have a lot of teachers that are really wrapping their arms around the staff that we have to help support, to support them also.
As well as social-emotional coaching for adults. Like, we, we actually have somebody who's dedicated to offering opportunities for teachers to be able to come and say, I'm really struggling. This is what I'm struggling with. And it's not in any kind of an evaluative way, but it gives them an opportunity. She's there on Wednesdays and Fridays every week to have somebody to help walk through some of the, kind of just personal supports that they might need. So, yeah, I mean, I think we've been trying to hit it from every angle that we possibly can. And I know, you know, I think you said it, Blueprint meeting the other day, it's just like, it's not for lack of trying. You know, it just seems like they can call up the base and get a job that might pay them more money for a few hours of work. So.
We're gonna, we're gonna conclude today with a staffing report that talks about the persistent vacancies that we're all facing. I will tell you, last night, I had the opportunity to spend some time with your newest middle school science teacher, Megan Waddle. And she, Waddle, right? Yeah. She had a, a lot of really good things to say about the support that she's, that she's seeing and, and, and her, her experiences so far. Now, she's only been with us since, I think, January 6th or whatever that was. So there's still a lot of story, there's still a lot of story left to be written, but I mean, that really, you know, you know, anything, anything we can do to reinforce and, and to recognize that it's, it's every, it's every building in the school system, it's everywhere, that people are recognizing the depth of talent that's found in every single classroom with great teachers. If you can manage 25, you know, seven-year-olds, you can pretty much do almost anything else, you know, that, that the world might throw at you occupationally. And to the people on base, knock it off. Knock it off. So, yeah, I, I just wanted, just to reinforce that you are finding a way to staff, and we're all experiencing this. And I, I am impressed with the person that you've brought on. She was, she was really a, a warm, a, a, it was a, it was a very nice conversation we had last night.
Right. And I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pony on Jim's comment about the, about the MCAP scores. You know, they're very good across the board. And I'm encouraged just, I'm going to kind of flip it on, on our side, on our non-public Chesapeake Public Charter School students. You know, we're, we're catching up, and I'm gonna, I think that's a lot to the work that, you know, Mrs. Bachner's presented to us several times over the past about, you know, the supports they're putting in place, you know, for math and reading and different, and different things. So I think, you know, I, I think that's, it, it's showing, you know, because before it's always been a much larger disparity than what it is, you know, with, with this latest round. So hats off to everyone.
We're catching up.
Yep.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. I want to thank you for your numbers of years of success. I remember when this first started many, many years ago from finding a lo, a location. Most charter schools fail within the first few years for a variety of reasons, whether financial or academic. You came in with a vision, a mission, and a purpose, and you fulfilled those goals. K through eight, you are there. Whatever challenges you faced with, you always, through teamwork, collaboration, you meet those challenges in a very successful way. You are a model for the state of Maryland of a public charter school, and I appreciate what you do. And I know you will have continued success in the future.
I'm, I'm going to certainly echo those remarks, but also those of Mrs. Bailey. Both of us have made note of the number of, of teachers that you've lost. And have to say that, you know, with a nod towards Mrs. Washington, she and I've watched you all through, throughout your existence, and this is a significant change for you. And, and I think that's why it jumped out at us. So I'm glad to hear that you're working at it. Certainly, we recognize that you're facing some of the same challenges that we are. But because CPCS is such a close community, it, it just, it just surprised us. So thanks for updating us on, on how you are responding to that. And I look forward to seeing better numbers for next year when you guys come back. So congratulations on all your successes. And, and, and it's wonderful to see the diversity that you've managed to get. It does mirror what is here in our community pretty closely. And, and that's really what the board was seeking when we asked you to take a look at how the lottery was being held and what you might do differently to increase the diversity of your school. So congratulations on that respect.
If Mrs. Weaver's watching, she'd be so happy.
Yes, she would.
I mean, you've grown your capacity of your school by a third, methodically, over time, and at the same time, putting things in place to have the most representative student body that you, that, that we have. And, and it's just, and, and then you keep on performing very, very well. So, you know, as you, as you have expanded and diversified, you have not lost that, the performance. So that's, that's, that's certainly, that's certainly great. And most importantly, I'm going to see on the 25th, right? March 25th, we're all going to be recruiting and teachers and everything like that. We'll see right there. You know, it's all going to be good stuff.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Mar. I think you're back on with Ms. Bachner and Ms. Mills.
Rising freshman transition, a lot of work of our counselors here in our conversation.
Well, good evening again. So as Monissa had mentioned, we are gearing up for our rising freshman orientation. And so we wanted to make sure that we shared not only what is happening that evening, but all of the other programs that tie into the high school program of studies so that as we work with students who are rising from eighth grade to ninth grade, not only the transition for getting ready for that, that leap into the bigger building, they also understand what the coursework and the different programs and opportunities that there are. So the three of us will be presenting. I'm going to just start with the rising freshman nights. As Monissa had mentioned, they are just two weeks away, March 6th, 7th, and 8th, starting with Leonard Town High School, then Choptikon, and then Great Mills. We will be presenting, first of all, the overview of what the high school courses and assessment requirements and anything that's required for them as they schedule their way through high school. But our students will be speaking to them as well. In fact, this week and last week, we met with our members of the Superintendent Student Leadership Advisory Council, the SLAC teams at each of the high schools so that they can prepare what advice they would offer for fellow high schoolers as they walk through those doors. And so the students will hear from other students and then have the opportunity to hear about the different programs, the academies, the, the general studies track, the AP courses, whatever it is that they're thinking about as they go into high school, they're going to have an opportunity to talk with others about it, including our counselors, teachers, and fellow students. So that's, that's what's going to happen on each of those evenings. They run from 6 o'clock to 7:30. Students, they can attend the, the school to, they will be attending, but they could also, if they can't make it that night, the same material, the same information will be presented at all three nights. And we also want to make sure that our students in non-public schools also know they are invited too, if they're going to be attending our high school too. We, you know, we have several that are in middle schools or in eighth grade outside of our own middle schools, and they too are welcome and can please attend. So with that, I'm going to go forward to the next slide and Ms. Bachner.
You've heard me talk a lot in the last month about the program of studies, but it's very important that we always come before you to approve the program of studies to get ready for this night, as well as getting ready to schedule students. So it is absolutely designed to assist students to meet their graduation expectations and, of course, to promote their own career and personal goals. All the courses are designed to challenge students. We always ask students to really think about what their goals are and their aspirations and to plan accordingly with the program of studies because we feel that there's many courses that can prepare them for whatever it is they'd like to do. And we always encourage parents and students to use the program of studies. It will be on our new website. On March 1st, it will be published to the, the website in plenty of time for the rising freshman orientation nights. We do do some hard copies to the schools as needed, but we kind of wait a week or two after we do the website publication because always there's some tweaks or things that we didn't see with a 182-page document. Sometimes you have to make sure that it is right before you go to print shop for that. As I said, you can access the program of studies on the website. And just a reminder that your program of studies corresponds to your graduation cohort. And always, is MSDE changes graduation requirements? That's the game changer. And then we'll come to you and try to make those revisions.
Can I ask a question? So, and if I'm jumping ahead, let me know. So the eighth graders meet with their counselors and then they develop their schedule. So is there some way that through Schoology, we can push out to the parents when that is happening? Because what happened with my son last year, right, so he went and got his schedule. Because what happened with my son last year, right, so he went and got his schedule and it was crumpled up on a piece of paper in his knapsack or bookbag or whatever, and I had to ask before I saw it. So I'm sure it was him. But, I mean, just, you know, we, we have so much communication, but just to push out like, hey, you know, these kids with last name in these alphabets, you're gonna be meeting with your guidance counselor during ELA this week or whatever it is. But just, just as a reminder to the parents that it's happening.
And we can absolutely tell the middle school principals that if they could use this.
Some more to communicate that or something like that, that would be something that could absolutely.
Right, I mean, some more is good, but I mean, if you actually get that email on Schoology, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to overburden because I know, you know, a lot of it is the parent and the student's responsibility at the same time. But just for those, for those parents who, this is their first time going from eighth grade into high school, it just might be like a reminder.
Absolutely, and a good idea. I'm also here to talk about academies and pathways. I think this is the first year in many years I'm coming before you with no changes this year to academies and pathways, other than a little tweak to one of our portfolios and how we're going to evaluate. But other than the academy itself, we're not making any changes. So the Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, which we lovingly call AVPA, Global International Studies, GIS, Science, Technology, Engineering, Math, STEM. Applications will go, because we've had calls already, they will open on Wednesday, March the twenty-ninth. You do not have to be, it's not first come, first served, so you are welcome at any time during the window to apply. And bless you, academy applications, they do close on Friday, May fifth. That is a little longer of a window than we've typically had, but spring break is in there, so we accounted for that. And then all applicants will be notified of their status into the academy on or before Friday, May twenty-sixth, which is that Friday before Memorial Day weekend. Additional application information is always on our website. There are wonderful academy links right to our websites that give lots of pictures, testimonials, application information, contact information, of course, which is Ms. Gill for the academies. But just to remind you that we will continue the practice that all students that are currently in STEM eight, if they apply, will go on to STEM nine if they're in good standing. And basically, if you're passing the courses in STEM eight, you're in good standing. If you are not in any of our academies, or if you're having difficulties, we always have what we call art meetings through the year, which are with parents, students, and academy teachers, and those are academy review teams, so that students get support along the way, even if they are struggling in classes before they or if somebody has to decide that they're not going to continue in an academy program.
An art meeting?
Art meeting.
Academy review team.
And it makes real sense for AVPA, to have the art meeting. If you remember, we did change last year to the Academy of Finance at all high schools this, this year. It has been very successful. We have, we're excited. We want to see one more year and make sure those ninth graders who registered for the academy, because it's not an application for Academy Finance's registration. We're very hopeful to see those ninth graders continuing as tenth graders, so actually continuing on to be part of that Academy Finance for, for a second year. And of course, this, this academy is very much into the blueprint pathways. It really correlates very, very nicely, so we're very much watching this and to see how this goes. And just a reminder that if you're currently in that cohort of Academy of Finance at Chopticon High School, before we started this, so tenth and eleventh graders, they will continue at Chopticon in that Academy of Finance as they planned to when they started high school. Freshman Academy, very successful. We are going to use the same process that we used last year. So what happens is at this time, middle schools are starting to generate their list of people that they think are good candidates to be in freshman academy. We have a screener that has a list to help middle schools do that. There is no limit of the number of students that a middle school can put on their list that goes to the corresponding high school. And then the high school works all summer long to contact families, to talk with students, and to develop those cohorts. And just a reminder, every one of our high schools has seventy-five seats for freshman academy.
Do you, is this, is that part of the rising freshman night also?
Yes.
Freshman academy?
There will be a breakout session for freshman academy.
Okay, and do you have like, do you have like a fact, like a cheat sheet on it?
Uh, yes, we'll be working with the schools. Every one of the sessions has some sort of handout.
It has a brochure.
Okay. All right. Cause I, I had, I had a few calls last summer by students who were homeschooled that were then selected for the freshman academy. And the parents were just, they were very, I think they were, they were thinking that it was more of a, my child is a behavioral problem and they need to be separated. So, you know, I, I was just wondering, because I don't, I don't know what was handed out, so I'm like, that's not the case.
Yeah, that's not on the brochures.
I didn't think it was, and I don't, I don't even know if, you know, they had gone into the session, you know, but they were, you know, their child was selected to, you know, to be considered, so.
Right, and each, I'm sorry, Dr. Smith.
I was just gonna say that, that the freshman academy is expanding to seventy-five per site, and then the performance of the kids in the freshman academy, they have outperformed their on-grade level peers.
That was my hook, that was, that was my hook with when I spoke to the mother.
It says a lot about the structures, the support, and the teachers that we have directly involved in the work in the freshman academy in each one of our schools.
And what I was gonna also say is please encourage those families, and since we're being reported, encourage them that each of the freshman academies, it's, this is grant-funded through S R three, and so we're lucky enough to have an administrator at each school that really is in charge of that freshman academy, so please, please call and ask to speak and, and have those administrators or somebody that, and if they can't get ahold of me, I usually work all summer, call me, and I'll be happy to share that data and, and talk to them and, you know, and make sure it's the right fit, because it should be the right fit for their student. Maybe it's not. And then we have other programs like the Academy of Finance. Maybe somebody wants, and you can actually be involved.
Well, and as I recall, freshman academy and Fairlead Academy, if you are a behavior problem, then you are less likely to get a slot there. Because that at least has been the, the path that there are certain expectations, so I'm sorry that parents and students perhaps have that perception of that place. It is really not what it is.
And then Fairlead, nice, very, very good lead-in for Fairlead. And there are two ways to apply for Fairlead Academy. We want to make sure we knew that, uh, share that, because I think people feel that it has to be a recommendation, and it can absolutely be a recommendation. We have quite a few kids from freshman academy that may go to Fairlead, as well as other students from the comprehensive high school, but people can also apply to fresh, our Fairlead Academy. So if you think that your child would benefit from that, you can go ahead and apply to, to Fairlead Academy. Applications are online, but if you need support, you could always go to your counselor and ask for support in order to apply to the academy. And just a reminder that Fairlead Academy is for grades ten through twelve. And they come from all three of our high schools, Chopticon, Great Mills, and Lenartown. And attendance is based upon the twelve graders that are exiting and the number of students who perhaps go back to their home school, because that's the point of Fairlead, is to give them support if they want to attend back to their home school to do that, and then we accept others. So that is how we debase on the enrollment. But to let you know that I talked to Ms. Dr. Johnson the other day, and she said their sweet spot, they'd love to have about a hundred and twenty students enrolled, and I think right now they have about a hundred and twelve. And then Forest Center, James A. Forest Career and Technology Center. For the most part, our ninth graders will not be going to the Forest Center. We love to share with them the experiences, because in tenth grade, they have the opportunities to start programming there. The first round of applications has closed on February seventeenth. That's why we do the Tech Expo in January, to get them ready and prepared for that. We will reopen the applications after that first round when we see that there are spaces available and for what programs, so students have the ability to, to do that. And like Ms. Funya said about the charter school, you can still apply even when that application is closed, and we encourage that to do so. If you are a student who registers with our school system starting July one, you absolutely could apply to the Tech Center and then be part of those rosters, looking at second rounds or spaces that are filled and to the seats are filled. And again, if there is a contact, so that's on our website also, if you'd like to, to contact the Tech Center for any questions that you have about when that application window will reopen.
All right. Um, there are a few changes for the Virtual Academy. For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the Virtual Academy will provide the following services to middle schools, Home Hospital Teaching, or HHT, Interim Alternative Education Classroom, or the IAEC, and the Alternative Education Placement, which is the AEP. When students are assigned to one of these special programs, they will use the Edge Annuity Platform to complete online coursework. The Virtual Academy teachers will set up Google Meets twice a week for students in order to provide them with the support and assistance with their online assignments. For the high schools, the ninth through twelfth grade students may enroll in the Virtual Academy. This is going to be considered a full-year commitment on the part of the students. The Virtual Academy will offer core courses that meet graduation requirements. Each class will meet twice a week through a Google Meets with their, with their teacher, and the teacher will have office hours available to meet with individual students on Fridays. And during those Google Meets, teachers will provide instruction virtually. In addition to the Virtual Academy School, high school students will also have access to the following special programs, HHT, IAEC, and the AEP. And also, beginning in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the Virtual Academy will provide support to students enrolled in Edge Annuity Virtual Learning Opportunity, or EBLO. We like our acronyms. This program has been offered at all three high schools for the past three years. Currently, the students work online using the Edge Annuity Platform, and they check in once a week with a teacher that's assigned to them at their home school. Next year, the Virtual Academy staff will meet with the EBLO students twice a week virtually, and those will, will support them with assistance with their online coursework. And this support is started to, or scheduled to start at the beginning of the second marking period, and that's the Virtual Academy.
And there will be a breakout session to answer questions about Virtual Academy at the rising freshman nights as well. So any parents who are interested or need information about, there will be a session on that there too. So there is our presentation, and we look forward to seeing full auditoriums and full schools that first week of March.
Yeah, we definitely get a lot.
LHS is always full to the board, so.
All three of the schools, pretty much.
And I don't know if anyone noticed, but Dr. Morris Chopticon Keller's, I am Great Mills, and Ms. Mills is Lenartown, to represent our presentation.
Little outfit coordination. It's totally my idea.
Staffing update. Dr. Farrell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And happy birthday.
Thank you.
Uh, so I wanted to, to present a little bit of information. Some of it's not so great, but just bear with me, about where we have been over the last five years and where we are right now as far as staffing. So we're gonna first look at all of our new hires and all of those individuals that left our system over the last five years. So if you look back to FY nineteen, you can see that we hired about four hundred and nine new staff members, and we lost around three hundred and sixty-nine. Then you're gonna see a dip in FY twenty and FY twenty-one. That was COVID, March thirteenth, Friday, March thirteenth, twenty-twenty. That's when things hit us and we shut down and people just kind of stayed. Like, we didn't have much change, much turnover, things like that. Then we come out of COVID, S R funds hit, we get all this money to bring on all these new positions, we're bringing on lots and lots of people, and lots and lots of people are leaving us as well. So then we look at this year, we're up to four hundred and sixty-four new hires across the board. Two hundred of those are substitute teachers, which is great. But we've also lost two hundred and twenty-seven staff members this year, and we're not at the end of the year yet, so. These numbers are still growing, because we're still bringing people on, although not as much now, but we're also losing people kind of a lot now.
But these aren't all teachers, correct?
No, this is all staff members, all staff members. This number includes temporarily extra pay for extra duties, substitutes, education support professionals, certificated staff members, and administrators. So everyone that we bring on and we issue a paycheck to is in this number.
So operational, safety and security, all of that?
Everything.
Dr. Farrell, the, the people that are leaving, that's, that's the same year, correct?
Correct, the same year. And so when you're looking at this and you're seeing fiscal years, so I ran the numbers from July one to June thirtieth, each of those fiscal years, so we're matching our budget year here. Now, state staffing, what MSDE requires, they use a different number. They use October fifteenth of every year. I don't know why they picked that date, but that's the date the state goes by when they're looking at staffing. I have no clue why, so.
The, the biggest look here that's, that's important is recognizing when we talk about the work that's going on at central office and in HR particularly, you know, when you're talking about hiring four hundred and, onboarding four hundred and twenty-four staff members and then exiting three hundred and seventy-five, so, you know, that's, that's a lot of people in and out. That's an incredible amount of work. And this year, four hundred and sixty-four, that's a big number of hiring. But we, the two twenty-seven for leaving, that usually in April, May, and June, that's when people tell us that they're not gonna come back. That's when they tell us they're retiring or they're going someplace else or whatever. People haven't historically left St. Mary's County Public Schools in the middle of the story. And that's what we're having this year, is we're having people leave. They're under contract for the entire year. When you teach, you sign a contract. You are to work from the first day of school until the last day for a ten-month staff, and if you break that contract, there's consequences and all of that. This number reflects the, well, and you'll see it very specifically when we talk about certificated staff.
And, and Dr. Smith mentions the, the amount of work that HR does, but, uh, I mean, I have to say payroll does a lot of work too, because setting up someone in our payroll system and then exiting them out and figuring out their payout contract, it's a lot of work, so.
Information technology, all the access that's granted and trained and then taken away, yes. It's an incredible amount of work.
So now we're gonna dig in and we're gonna start looking at groups of individual employees. So we're gonna look at our educational support professionals, our ESMIC bargaining, ESP bargaining unit. So you can see back in FY nineteen, pre-COVID, pre-pandemic, seventy-six, eighty-nine. Okay, yep, we exited more than we hired. We get that. We see that we plateaued in twenty-twenty. We were going back to the same thing in twenty-one, and then you can see the jump that we're making now. So we're hiring, we're doing pretty good with hiring, but we have lots of vacancies still too. So while those numbers are higher, we're still not filling all of our vacancies. And one of those reasons literally is because the outside agencies pay more. And when it comes down to the end of the day, you know, you've gotta feed your family. So the paycheck that you bring home is very important, which is why, you know, it's great that we've signed this agreement with ESMIC next year to increase our support staff and why we, the board, gave that one-time incentive this year. I mean, that's great. Those are things that will keep our support staff here.
Do you think it's also, I mean, it, it's clearly salary, but don't you also think some of it is flexibility?
I would say that's probably more in our certificated staff, because more of them are leaving to go to the base to work virtually.
And these are, and so the ESMIC number is the best, this is the best data that we have. We are hiring more than are leaving. Our blue bar is bigger than our red bar. If the blue bar is bigger than the red bar, yay. If the red bar gets bigger than the blue bar, we are, we have persistent vacancies, you got more people leaving than coming in, that's a problem.
Right, I'm just, I'm talking more about the jump, you know, from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two and then to twenty-twenty-three, just, you know, because a lot of, you know, a lot of companies just offer flexibility. You know, you have compressed work schedules for Friday, you know, and, you know, and that, it trickles down with degreed and non-degreed positions as well, so that's why.
We'll definitely see it in the next slide.
Yeah.
So in the next slide, we're talking about our teachers, our certificated bargaining unit, our ESMIC members. So you can see, pre-pandemic, you know, we were pretty close. The first year of the pandemic, FY twenty, hired a hundred and fourteen, we lost ninety-two, stayed the same in twenty-one. And then you can see our jumps, you know, we were hiring more people in twenty-two, and then this year, you can see we have a problem. We hired a hundred and twenty-one new staff, and we had a hundred and thirty-four leave us already at this point in the year.
And that number is gonna increase substantially in April, May, and June as people tell us that they're the traditional trend line is that that, people tell us that they're, they're not coming back in May, June. And, you know, this, this is, this is right at the crux of where we all are. This is the, the conversation that you're having with the Chesapeake Public Charter School, the conversation we're having with everybody is we've hired a hundred and twenty-one, and yet we have a hundred and thirty-four vacancies, just in, just in the certificated ESMIC staff.
And the thing that hurts us the most is when individuals don't finish out that contract. Because there's not teachers waiting in the wings right now to just step into a classroom to finish out for three months.
Well, right, and everybody else is under contract.
Right.
Everybody else in the state of Maryland is under contract, so they cannot break their contract to come here and work for us. That's why, you know, you have that release with prejudice where we withhold certification so that people can't jump in the middle of the year and go to another school system in the state of Maryland.
So then our last group is our administrative staff, our SMASA bargaining unit. Now, the thing I need to point out here is when we hire folks into the SMASA unit, the majority of the time we're hiring them from ESP or ESMC. So they're not brand-new hires to the system, which means our blue bars are smaller, even though we're still bringing people into that unit. And our red bars are higher because when they actually leave, and majority of the time it's because they're retiring.
Right.
Um, that's why that is so much higher. So that's a little bit abnormal in these slides, but I just wanted to make sure you understood that, that, you know, we don't hire a lot of administrative folks from the outside, most of them are promoted from within.
And the five vacancies that you, when you see the, the two to versus seven, I mean, we have people in there that are acting, that they haven't been officially hired and put into the roles they've been maintaining.
So those are our trends over the last five years. Now we're gonna talk about where we are as of, and this was as of Monday when I was sitting at home on President's Day, making sure that I'm, it's up to date on vacancies as possibly can be. Um, in each category, and I broke these out by our budget categories, you guys are all familiar, very familiar, with the budget categories now. Um, in category oh-one, administration, we have administrative secretary, which is in the superintendent's office. We have two positions, uh, administrative positions in finance, the payroll coordinator and the finance coordinator. In mid-level, um, you know that we have, uh, elementary principal vacancy, we have someone that's acting in there. That's what that little star there is for. Um, the same is true with, uh, the assistant principal vacancy and the middle school assistant principal vacancy. And then we have five and a half secretarial staff. So these are office, central office, or school-based secretarial staff vacancies. So if anyone has secretarial experience and they want to join us, click that red button, join our team.
And again, part of that too is that they roll from one, so if you're a secretary one, you become a secretary two. Secretary two, you become an administrative, you know, secretary or principal's secretary to the principal. So we, because we promote from within, a vacancy e-ends up starting here and goes all the way down as we promote, we promote, we promote. So like one vacancy, it, before we finish out the entire process, it might be three or four months.
I just had a quick question, what is, this might be really, really like, I don't know. What does half mean in this like context?
So, um, some of our smaller schools have, uh, part-time secretaries, so they only work fifty percent of the day at our smaller schools.
Got it.
Getting into instruction, um, these are our classroom vacancies, twenty-eight and a half vacancies. Seven are elementary teachers, six are middle school, six are high school, seven and a half paraeducators. Again, probably one of our smaller elementary schools that has a part-time vacancy. Two school psychologists. Um, in special education, we're sitting at seventeen vacancies. O and M is, uh, orientation and mobility specialist. Paraeducators, seven, uh, one secretary in special education, two speech-language pathologists, five, uh, special ed teachers, and one vision therapist. Moving through our budget, um, in student services, we have four vacancies, um, a behavior specialist, a pupil personnel worker, and two social workers. In transportation, we have three vacancies, a bus assistant and two bus drivers. In operations, we have a building service manager vacancy, two assistant manager vacancies, two building service worker vacancies, a computer support specialist vacancy, and a safety assistant vacancy. And then finishing out, um, in maintenance, we have five vacancies. Of course, our director position, that's being filled by an acting, um, an HVAC maintenance worker, we have two. Painting maintenance worker, we have one. A work order specialist, which just became vacant because that person got promoted into a new position, one. Um, in capital planning, we have a part-time secretary position open. And then in food services, we have now thirteen because of today, um, food service worker, three-hour food service workers. So those, that's where we're at right now with vacancies. And of course, um, I'll say it again, if there are people out there that are looking for jobs, um, click the red button, join our team, we are always collecting applications. If you don't know what position you want or you just don't know where to go, um, call us, email us, stop by. We'll help you fill out the application and get hired.
Recruit, 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 every single day. And so, uh, at the next board meeting, we're gonna be, we'll talk about this a little further. We'll probably have, we'll certainly have more direction with the budget. We're gonna talk a little bit about the calendar, we're gonna talk about things that we might be able to do as a system to, uh, let our staff know that we understand the great challenge and stress that we're all under. Um, again, you know, I'm old, obviously, cause I've been doing it for a long time. Thirty-two, thirty-two years in, everybody that I've worked, worked with, we, this is, we've never, ever, ever been in a situation like this. And I just can't say enough about the people who are doing the work. You know, in the middle of all of this, while we're doing this, you've, you've got everybody, you know, processing seven hundred ins and outs. Um, it's, it's an amazing amount of effort and time and, and work. And we just, we just need to get to the other side.
You know, what else is interesting is, correct me if I'm wrong, enrollment's down.
Well, so.
And, and, yeah, because enrollment's down, we're still having this problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Think of it if we had a thousand more people, a thousand more students.
Right, right. If everybody, if the, if, if sequestration hits and the budget goes sideways, there are sixteen hundred kids that are on some version of home instruction. If they all came back at the same time, we would have, we'd have a lot of things going on in the school system.
We'd all be in the classroom.
We'd all, well, yeah, we'd all be teaching, so, and teaching classes at forty.
I'd be on that three-year provisional license program.
Right.
And a lot of those people who've decided to go join the base, they find out the government shuts down and they don't get paid.
Might be joining us in that work.
Um, and you've, and you've lost your teaching certificate. I'm, I'm just telling you, I've lived it. Um, you need to, um, you need to really consider, um, what you're leaving and what you're potentially losing.
Thanks, Dr. Farrell.
Thank you.
Thank you. March twenty-fifth, right?
March twenty-fifth, be there at B Square.
Job fair.
Job fair, job fair.
And is that job fair for everything?
That's a teacher job.
This is focusing on teachers, we're gonna have further opportunities for recruitment for the other facets.
So do you include your, is that all, I'm gonna ask this, is that all within the category of instruction? So do you include your paraeducators within there or that's just strictly teachers?
Strictly teachers.
Strictly certificated.
But it's not just instruction, it's also special education.
I understand, okay, okay.
But also, we have a number of people right now who, um, are with us who don't have teaching certificates. So if you're, I mean, so this teacher's job fair, if you're interested in going into the classroom and having support in order to do that, this is an ideal time for you to do this.
Absolutely. And if you're in a neighboring county and you wanna change for next year, finish out your contract, do not break your contract. But this would be a great opportunity to come visit us and see what we offer on this side of the, the peninsula.
I hope that with some of the things that are going on in Virginia, perhaps some of the folks that are over in King George County and other areas might, um, might find that, um, we're a very supportive area. And, um, if you go to an assistant principal and tell them there's a problem, um, it's addressed.
Maybe we can get a, a banner to go over top of the one that Charles County has over in Dahler that says, "Come teach." In Charles County, we'll just put, "Come teach in St. Mary."
Put a whole bunch of little signs afterwards. Charles County is great, but keep going.
The realtor signs, you know, where you like line it up, you know, open house.
Open house.
Just keep going, just keep going, just keep going.
Get your trailer.
There's that, I mean, that nice new bridge.
Come on. No, I just, I just wanna say thank you, cause I mean, I, I know in some of the schools and with, um, certain times, there's a lot of piecemeal, right, I mean, of covering classes and, and things like that. So, um, it just, it, I, I don't think a lot of people understand, you know, how much effort does go in in order to ensure that instruction does happen every single, you know, hour of the day, especially when you have vacancies like this and then you have, you know, um, individuals who are sick or on vacation or whatever, so.
I mean, I remember when I first came to HR, like, we would literally have people coming in to sign up to be a sub, waiting for someone to leave a classroom. And it was almost like they were ready to duke it out to see who'd be the next, going before the board to get into that classroom. That was, that was great times.
Right.
Yeah.
Or even just, you know, all of the, the people who are looking for, you know, a, you know, a, a secretarial job within the school system.
Right.
You know, and now what you're sitting, you have so many open. I mean, that was like a fight to get one.
It was.
Well, it's an important piece of information and data to, to all be discussing publicly. Please recognize that we go forward before the county commissioners on, uh, February, Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, in the afternoon, uh, the budget work session where we are requesting a hundred and thirty million dollars from the, from the commissioner group, eight and a half million dollars more than they provided us last year. And they're under no obligation to do so through any kind of funding formula or maintenance of effort. But we all recognize that the only way to really move the county, the school system, our community forward is to get people and it's a question, it's a question of money. It's a question of money right now because we are, the blueprint, again, has created a wage war. And we need to, we need to be given the tools to fight the battle.
Absolutely.
All right, and.
I just wanted to say thank you. Sorry, Dr. Farrell.
So close.
How many times can we have you stand up?
No, I just wanted to say thank you because, uh, as a student and SMCBS, I've definitely like witnessed this happening. Um, I started school in like, I think, I think I was, I started pre-K in two thousand and nine. Um, and yeah, it was kind of, it was the situation you were talking about. I just remember there being, everyone's mom was a sub.
Yeah.
My mom was a sub, actually, fun fact, my mom was a sub when we were in elementary school.
Does she wanna come back?
Fun fact, I should like to teach high school science or English.
No, but, um, I've, yeah, it's just been, it's been frustrating from the student standpoint, of course, because, um, you know, when we all are sitting in the auditorium or sitting in the cafeteria because there's just not enough subs or, um, people's teachers leave halfway through the year and everyone's just like, okay, so what now?
Yeah.
Because, you know, you just don't know how to learn in that situation. Um, it's been a lot of frustration from the student standpoint, but, um, like, me being able to see all of this has been really helpful because, um, you know, it was frustrating for me, but I've always been like, oh, like, I wonder how must, how hard this must be, you know, on the adult side of it. But, um, I, I can't imagine like how much effort and how much work goes into, um, this process of ensuring that there's instruction going on every day. Um, and, I don't know, all I have to say is, teachers are awesome. And like, I, it's, it's disheartening to see that, um, you know, less and less of them are staying or returning. Um, but, you know, if you're a teacher and you're out there and you're watching this board meeting for some reason, and.
A hundred people do, maybe a hundred and fifty.
I don't know, if you are and you're on the fence and you're like, oh, like, I don't know. I just wanna remind you that you matter to students and that you make impact on, you make a really, really significant impact on their lives and, um, you know, what the rest of their path looks like. And it's important that you're there and you do matter and we know you matter and I, I know you matter. And, um, yeah, please stay and please keep teaching because I don't know who I would be without my teachers. And this is just like.
Well, what else are you gonna say? Great, you're an engineer and you're making more money, who are you inspiring? Who are you inspiring? I'm a money manager, who are you inspiring?
You're talking about both of my kids.
Well, I'm just saying, well.
You hate both of them.
They're incredibly gainfully employed, you obviously have done a great job, but, but are they inspiring?
Looking for a teaching job, send them our way.
Because that really, that, I mean, that is a, that's a, that's a key thing. And we, and we see that when we're talking to teachers, that, you know, that, that, that really is why they're doing what they're doing because of, of you, because the students like you. I mean, that really is, that, that really is it, so.
Well, and I will say, I mean, it is really hard as a teacher to start a school year. I mean, there's, you know, you set a schedule, you get students, uh, acclimated to your style of teaching and how you interact with them. It is twenty times harder to step into a classroom in the middle of the year once those have already been set by a former teacher or they weren't set. And now you've gotta come in, so I mean, it, it is really hard. But, you know, students set up and earn trust with their teachers. And then when that teacher leaves and a new teacher comes in, the students are like, ooh.
It's hard.
It is, it's really hard, it's really hard.
Yeah, just like my junior year of high school, so last year, um, my chemistry teacher, um, Ms. Paz, she's wonderful. Um, she had to leave two months earlier than expected. And that was no one's fault at all, but it was just like crazy because this is a class where we're preparing for an exam. And so then we had to figure out like a long-term sub situation. We had to like get support from another science teacher within our school building, Ms. Wiltshire. She did a great job at the uni stepping in, but obviously she couldn't stop teaching her classes. So we were like watching like AP daily videos every day, like trying to like self-teach. And I don't know, it's just really rough without a teacher. And so like, not even trying to guilt you adults, but like, like if you, if you're a teacher and you're considering leaving, just like.
Come on.
Ah, like, I, I know, I know that it's like, there's so many, there's so many moving factors in it all. But just like the wonders that teachers do for student, student support and student development is just like crazy. Like, I could not fathom this, you know, like maybe a few years ago, but like now I've, just like, I've seen all the sides of it and it's crazy. Like, it, I don't, as I said, I'm reiterating myself a lot today, but like, I don't know who I would be without my teachers. No one, like, I'd literally no one, like.
All professions come from teachers.
Yeah, exactly.
There's your PSA.
There, yeah.
All right.
That's not to say your, your children.
Go, run, run, go quickly, go quickly.
Your children are actually inspirational.
All right, the next board meeting is gonna be on Wednesday, March eighth. The executive session begins at eight o'clock and the open meeting will begin at nine. And with that, we are adjourned.